A lot of this is Greenville-centric, and I'll point those out when we get to those. So during this overview, we're going to talk about the background and the history of alcohol establishments. This includes the 500-foot rule. This also includes bar 2022. City staff generally has categorized some uses as, you know, alcohol establishments, and I'll get to what we consider an alcohol establishment. We're also going to look at the definitions and standards of those alcohol establishments, the role of the ABC Commission, because the Commission is the one who gives ABC permits, and then the current status, and we're going to ask for directions on next steps. So what is an alcohol establishment? So this is what city staff has used as a way for us to talk about an alcohol-centric establishment. And it has to do with the primary activity is the sale and consumption of alcohol on-site. So this includes uses as bar throughout time. This has been called a nightclub, a public-private club. And there was a change in state law, so now these are all considered a bar. We have a bar 2022. That is specifically a Greenville use. We'll talk about some specifics with it. As far as ABC is concerned, it is a bar. We have a microbrewery. That is small-scale, not large warehouses. They manufacture beer, and then they also, you can consume it on-site. We have a micro-distillery. Again, liquor of various different kinds is made on-site. You can also drink it there. We have a wine and beer store, so you can, you can buy beer and wine. Oh, thank you, my friend.
That saves the day.
You can buy beer and wine, but you just can't make it. And then the very last one is, we do have some retail uses that can have consumption of beer and wine, not mixed beverages, beer and wine on-site. So each of these have very unique rules and regulations. Part of it's based on state law, and then where possible, we have supplemented or added to it for Greenville's specific needs and desires.
Chantay, if I may, does that accessory use include what's called ancillary use?
It is, but it's very specific to, I believe, five retail uses right now that we have in the city. And again, it is for, if you've been to the Lowe's grocery store in Winterville, where you can shop and drink, it's sort of like that, but it's five specific uses. And again, it's just for wine and beer.
And there's no liquor ancillary use?
That is correct.
Okay.
So what is not considered an alcohol establishment? And so these are things where, again, the primary function is not the sale and consumption of alcohol on-site. So what I mean by that is, is if you're a restaurant and you sell beer, wine, or alcohol, you've got the 30-70 rule that we always talk about. We have a bowling alley. We have movie theaters. Again, you can go there, beer, wine, mixed beverages. But you're going to the movie theater to see a movie. You're going to the bowling alley to bowl. How is alcohol regulated? So the state of North Carolina, under Chapter 18B, regulates alcohol beverages, and that is the sale, purchase, transport, manufacture, consumption, and possession of alcohol in North Carolina. And under, I just refer to all these as ABC rules. The first thing is there's a distinct difference between drinking alcohol on the premise or if you buy it somewhere and you take it home, or you take it to a buddy's house. Very big difference. Generally, there's two kinds of permits. There's two buckets. Wine and beer is generally grouped together. Spiritous liquor is in a different bucket. And if you think about what they call alcohol by volume, so if you think about the size of a shot glass and how much alcohol, it's very much difference between wine and beer and liquor. And also along those same lines, beer and wine permits generally have less scrutiny than if you have a spiritous liquor mixed beverage license. What are the legal limitations as far as Greenville and how we regulate alcohol establishments? So there are certain parts of the rules that we have to live with, that we are preempted in changing or having to work around to it, if you will. And then the other part is, in July of 2022, some of you may remember, there was also a major update in state law, specifically had to do with bars and restaurants. And so that further impacted, and you'll see some of those changes again, to how we can regulate alcohol establishments. So through the years, and I mean many, many years, council has, I'm going to say, grappled with the rules and regulations, changing them, looking at different ways to do it. And of the last few changes that came up, but we were preempted by state law, meaning we couldn't touch those things, was regulating closing times, prohibiting a bar from charging for cover charge, requiring a building outfit essentially to come up to current building code, and then amateurization of existing bars. Staff did not recommend that council do any of these changes. Again, we have issues with the North Carolina Constitution, the general statutes, and some other things that, again, we really just need to stay out of. That doesn't keep us from changing some of the rules, but there are a couple of things that are what I call no-touch. Okay. So in July of 2022, there were a couple of changes in state law. We used to have what we used to call a public-private club or public-private bar. State law changed and says you can't be a private bar anymore. You are a bar. You are a publicly open bar. So the regulations that used to have, membership, annual dues, that's all gone. A bar is simply defined as an establishment primarily engaged in selling alcohol and consumption on the premises. Another big change was for a restaurant. Prior to 2022, a restaurant had to have 36 seats. And so the big changes were, a restaurant only has to have a minimum of 10 seats, and also the kitchen does not have to be fully operational while it's open. So the kitchen can close down before the actual establishment closes for the night. So now I want to talk about how do you go about getting an ABC permit. And again, we have two different buckets. We have beer and wine in one bucket, spiritous liquor in the other. So if someone desires to have a permit, they're going to come to the city. They're going to apply. It starts with our financial services. They're going to put in some information, and then we've got various different city departments that review those. Specifically for zoning, the first thing we want to know is what kind of use are you? We're not going to have a car dealership having a bar, right? We have certain uses that can sell alcohol. So we're going to want to know what the use is. We're going to check to make sure that that use is allowed by zoning. And then some other things we look for, and part of this is ABC's criteria as well that they want to know. We give the proximity to places of worship, schools, parks, et cetera. And then the last piece is a local opinion born from the city manager. We also have the fire marshal does an inspection. A building inspector also does an inspection. And then we have the police department that will also give any kind of information. ABC has the ability to use someone's reputation or character when they give a permit. Once all of that is finished, we give them about eight pieces of paper, all of this in one little packet, and the person takes this to ABC. And then the ABC Commission controls the vote from there as far as what permits they get. And then also they enforce, actually enforce the permits, and that would be ALLE. So those are together. One is a law enforcement, and one's more of the administration piece of it. Next, these are the milestones, and this goes back pretty far, of how Greenville has continued to change, regulate, change with the times as far as alcohol establishments. 1977, the council at that time established the nightclub use. That also included a 500-foot separation from nightclub to nightclub. In 1992, the council at that time deleted that 500-foot spacing rule. In 2005, the council at that time required annual reviews of nightclubs, and that was for new ones, right? So that was not the ones existing in 1979. In 2009, there was a fatal drive-by shooting in the downtown. At that time, there were 25 nightclubs. The term nightclub was changed to public-private club. Also, any new clubs at that time had to go through bouncer training, and that was through the police department. In 2010, council adopted the 500-foot rule that we're all familiar with, and that is 500 foot between bar to bar, between a bar and single-family dwellings that are allowed by zoning, and then also just any single-family zoning district. So again, 500 feet between all of those, and that is measured from lot line to lot line. And some of you may have been on council at the time. Hunden and Associates was hired in 2021. They were specifically asked to do an assessment of the 500-foot rule in the downtown area. We have a whole stack of a report, but at the end of the day, Hunden did recommend to delete the 500-foot rule, that it was looked at as an impediment to economic development in the downtown area. And then January 2023, council established the bar 2022 use. I've got some more slides to help explain it a little bit, but the size is capped at 2,000 square feet for the whole use. It also has to be located in the downtown area. I've got a map I'm going to show you. Added microbrewery and a micro-distillery as an accessory use to a bar. We updated the bar standards to align with state law. We updated the definition of a restaurant to align with state law. And because we did that, we deleted the D and E, or the dining and entertainment establishment, because it was redundant with a restaurant use. And then August of that same year, council considered deleting the 500-foot rule separation from bar to bar, except in the bar 2022 area. However, that was tackled indefinitely by council. We established the wine and beer store. Again, you can buy, take it home. We established the accessory use where you can have on-site consumption of beer and wine with some retail uses. And then we also added some additional zoning districts for a microbrewery and a micro-distillery. So what is a bar? So this is Greenville's rule, but it squares with state law. We are not in conflict with state law. It's an establishment where the primary use is engaged in selling alcohol and the consumption on the premises. You also may have live recorded music, a floor show, a dance area, and a full-service bar. However, you cannot be a restaurant, whether it's conventional or fast food, or a bar 2022. And then a bar 2022. So what is that? This is Greenville's own use. It is an establishment. Again, principal use is entertainment. It has to be less than 2,000 square feet. You can have live recorded music, floor show, dance area. Has to be in a special, or in a specific area. I'm going to show you that. The big caveat is there's no spacing between this use and any other use. So it doesn't matter that there's a bar next door, a bar 22 next door. It has no spacing requirements. However, it can only be in this area that's bounded by the purple. The north is the river, to the south is 10th Street. On the east side, that's Cotent. On the west side, that's roughly the railroad tracks and then Pitt Street. So again, in that area that's bounded by the purple. So now I want to talk about the different establishments we already have. So right now, we have 31 different alcohol establishments in the city. And then I have listed these in order of intensity. And so how we looked at intensity would be, you know, what is the primary function? We also looked at any kind of outside noises that could come from these properties, and also the, you know, where they could be located at as well. So right now, we have 20 bars citywide, live performance theater. That's the state theater, so we only have one of those. We have a bar 2022 that has a special use permit, but does not have ABC permits at this time. We have two microbreweries. That would be Pitt Street and Uptown Berlin. We have several different beer and wine stores here in town. TAP does one of them, Emporium. Those are examples. So for a bar, a bar has to have a special use permit that's given by the Board of Adjustment. They're only allowed in four different zoning districts. I want to talk about a special use permit. When I say special, they really are special. First of all, the way to determine if you need a special use permit is our table of uses delineates what uses require special use. You don't get to decide you want to be a special use. The other thing is the permits required for that use, again, in the zoning district. Board of Adjustment is the body who hears those and grants those. The other thing is the permit and all the conditions run with the land, not with the property owner. So when a special use permit is given to a piece of property, it stays there until it's rescinded, okay? But it doesn't travel with the person who got the permit. Again, no expiration date. This map shows you, again, we've got the purple boundary, which is the city's jurisdiction. Anything you see in green is city limits. The four zoning districts that I talked about are shown in red. So this is just those zoning districts. It doesn't take out if it's developed or not. All it's showing you is if the property is zoned, one of those four zoning districts. This is a list of the bars that we have right now. This is a blow-up of downtown, so we'll talk about this. So as of March 2025, there were four, 14, excuse me, bars in the downtown area. And then that yellow, sort of that halo you see, that's the 500-foot rule. And you'll notice we have a cluster mainly right in the horseshoe, where all the yellow halos are sort of sitting on top of one another. And that's because these bars are within 500 feet of each other. And then just down 14th Street, you'll see the last one, number 14. It currently does not have a name. That one does have a special use permit, and you will see how it has that yellow halo around it. There are no other circles intruding upon it. That was just given a special use permit either early this year or late last year. The blue and the red isn't particularly important other than the red means they've been pre-existing since the rules that we have in place now. And you'll notice each of those locations have a number that corresponds back to the name of the bar or the address. And then this is showing citywide, so I have added, I guess, about six more bars to it. And you'll see you've got those purple dots. Again, the same ones downtown. You'll see how they're kind of clustered on top of one another. And then we have some other outlined ones. And you'll notice that that purple dot is actually a 500-foot separation. So you can see how those are near each other, but they're not overlapping. So these are the common issues that staff has with the standards, and I'm sure a lot of you have had some of these same issues that's been brought to you. So the food sales is a very big issue. And what I mean by that is, we had someone who wanted to have an arcade, video games, and they wanted, they wanted a full bar. We had to look at that as a bar. We had a golf simulator. Go inside, and you know, you have some fun, but they wanted a full bar. And when I say little to no food sales, we're talking like some peanuts and chips and some cookies. They don't want to cook. That's not what they want to do. And then we have also been approached by the, by two different microbreweries that want to have spiritous liquor. And again, with your two buckets, if you're a microbrewery, you've got a beer and wine permit. You can make beer and you can sell beer, but if you want to ratchet it up to spiritous liquor, then you're almost by default becoming a bar, right? And so that's where staff has struggled with, is there some wiggle room within these? And I'm going to talk about the issues of, once the bird's out of the cage, it's very hard to put the bird back in the cage, right?
If I could, with that last slide, if you don't mind, just pausing there a minute. The state has told us that you cannot serve food in a bar, unfortunately. That was, you may remember when we had those changes. That was one of the changes that the state imposed on us, which I don't think is a good idea, but we're stuck with it. So that's one of the reasons why, you know, these places do not have food or are not proposing food. And the other thing I'm wondering about with these is, why can't alcohol be an ancillary use, for example, with these situations?
Okay. So if we can get to my next couple of slides, I think it'll help bring it together. So the common issues we've had with the standards, and basically with the state standards and some with our own standards, is the enforcement piece, and that is ABC and ALLE are the ones who control your permits, whether it's beer, wine, or spiritous liquor. PD helps. They help PD as well, but that permit resides with them. Also, one of the issues that we, that we have, and this is concerning restaurants, that their food sales, who have a full bar, may not be hitting those food sales, right? They may be just under that 30%. ABC cannot share their food sales data with us. So I can't call them up and say, can you tell me how, you know, the burger shop is doing, right? They can't tell me what their food sales are. So that's hard for us, and that puts the onus back on staff to get the operator to tell us the food, to tell us their percentages. Another issue we've had, if you look at downtown, again, issues with investment and business creation downtown. We have a lot of people who want to have a bar downtown, whether it's ritzy and upscale or not. That's, we have a lot of demand for it, right or wrong. And then something else we need to keep in the back of our minds is that if we start talking about loosening rules, we need to make sure that we're trying to keep it equal for all the other establishments that may not be as intense, but are the rules commensurate with those uses. Some of the complaints we have heard, the bar 2022, again, maximum size, 2,000 square feet. We have heard that from people who've inquired about that use, that it's too small. That's just what we've heard. Also, that specific use is limited to downtown, basically, in that purple rectangle that I showed you. And then the other thing is, it actually has more regulations and safety controls than a bar does. That was how we, that's how it was crafted. That's how it was created. But again, there's, there's a difference between their regulations and bars. So, you know, what we're here tonight is, I've tried to lay this out and give you brief history, where we stand with the standards. I'm sure some of you have had your own complaints and issues that's been brought to your attention. And so, you know, staff is asking for, what are your next steps? Do you want to maintain the stack's quo? If you would like to do some kind of change in the standards, then that means it would be a text amendment. Those follow the same route they always do, which would be to take the text amendment to P and Z for recommendation, and then bring it to council. And then the most important part is giving me some direction as to how, what you would like to change if you do want to change your standards.
Are you done? I don't want to pre-
Yes, ma'am.
If you're going to continue. So thank you. That's a very thorough presentation. I appreciate it. I know Les has been here a while. I can say that I'm the only person who was sitting on the council when the 500-foot rule was adopted. And I was running for election my first term when those three young men were gunned down downtown. So this is an issue that I've seen up close, and I have a great interest in protecting our downtown area and protecting the people who frequent our downtown area. And so the first question that I would want to ask is, do we need more bars? You know, we're looking at this, and I know one of your slides said, you know, it could be a potential limitation of business creation or expansion. I would say this is, we're not talking about conventional business. You know, we're not talking about a shop, a retail shop. We're not talking about a Boviet Solar that's going to employ hundreds of people. We're talking about two to three employees and a business model that is based on a high profit margin, and it's only open from very limited hours, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights between 9:00 and 2:00, between the two. It's not going to, we have to also look at what is the value to our community? How does it enhance our downtown? So the first question we really have to ask ourselves is, do we need more bars? Do we need this type of business specifically in our downtown? The other thing along those lines is, since the adoption of the 500-foot rule, downtown has become an entirely different kind of place. When I first moved here in 1992, downtown was a ghost town. You saw nothing downtown unless you came out at, you know, like 11 o'clock and into the Elbow or whatever, which I've been to the Elbow Room once, way back in my twenties. There was a lot happening. But we are more than that now, and we are a-
You're a gentleman?
No. We are a different kind of community now. I'm just not speaking from a perspective of, I've never seen downtown at night, back in the old days. I have. Now downtown, on Fifth Street, we have a pizza restaurant. We had a record store. They've now moved. We have boutiques. We have, we have ice cream and cookie shops. We had a hair salon. I'm not sure if it's still there. At one point, we had a tea house. In other words, we have had a variety of businesses that have been able to establish themselves on Fifth Street because bars were not able to come in. So that's the sort of the key point I think we really need to look at. The second point I would make is that one of your slides said that there's more safety. And I would say that's not a problem. That's something we should all feel very happy about and proud of, that we have more safety downtown, because we really need it, because it can be a very dangerous situation where you have a whole lot of people in an area and alcohol involved. And so I believe that more safety is a good thing and not at all a problem. And then I think the third issue, which is related to the first one, which is that this business model is not one that creates a lot of jobs, creates a lot of, you know, tax-based value, and honestly, it has a very niche purpose. And you have to say, what is, you know, what is the value to our community as a whole, and do we need more bars? And as far as the 30% to 70% ratio of food to alcohol- And as far as the 30 to 70% ratio of food to alcohol, it, it seems like we could just request receipts and, you know, and find out what people are selling. So my recommendation is that we maintain the current standards. We did adopt the bar 2022. I think there was a lot of trepidation in the community about that, who had gone through the previous violence and who was concerned. And we adopted bar 2022. We have good standards in place. And I think that that has shown itself to be a good success. So I'd say we maintain our, our current standards and the bar 2022 to continue to operate.
I would add one thing about everything you just said is that it is very difficult about the food sales. We can request it, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to supply it. And even if they supply it, we have no way of verifying if it is, if it is accurate. The state has the ability to go in and acquire audits. We don't have the ability to do that. So that's where this, that the enforcement, enforcement component of the bar versus the restaurant becomes very, very precarious for the city just because of being able to verify those food sales. You know, you're right now. We can request it, but that doesn't mean it's just going to.
What's the state's process for enforcement on that?
Oh, they've got, they hold permit. I mean, they, they're, they're the ones who, who issue the permit. If you don't provide that information, that's, that data has been making.
Just like when we were in COVID, when the state mandates it's always shutting down. That was their way of enforcement, making people run that position by the state.
Have they done that well in recent downtown?
Uh, I, I, that's questionable, how, how stringent they've been on those food sales. I will just leave it at that. Yes. It's questionable.
Because I, I would like to do away with the rules. But I want to be careful that we don't, as Chantay said, let the bird out of the cage and I know he gets back in. I want to make sure that we have the ability through North Carolina D C and the enforcement or when the bar is created. I also wanted to ask a question about what, what the process is like with board of adjustments and the bars presented to them.
The last one, we had eight, 16 Dickinson. There are certain criteria that the board of adjustment regularly looks at. It would be compliance with our comprehensive plan. They also look at health, safety, and welfare, any kind of detriment to the neighborhood. But with that, because it is board of adjustment and it's, you know, we use that fancy word quasi judicial. It has to be met with some evidence. It can't be based on how you feel, what you think. The board of adjustment can add conditions to a bar to help ensure those criteria. But there are some things that are in no touch, like hours of operation.
Cover charges. Cover charges?
Yeah, cover charges. Some of those are no touch, even for board of adjustment. So the last, and Brian, correct me. I don't think they had any additional conditions other than, you know, the building code, fire, safety, and to meet the standards within the ordinance. They did not have any additional conditions placed on them. And that's the former Stumpy's hatchet place is, is the last one.
Well, the reason I would like to do away with the rules, I think it really is hindering our economic development in some sectors of business, including restaurants and bars in this instance. And I think it's keeping us from, it's keeping operators from spreading out from downtown and, and creating other entertainment areas for the rest of the city. I think it would be great for, there to be other places for adults, not, you know, college-oriented individuals to go and enjoy themselves at night. And I think we need to foster that kind of development as we are welcoming in these big manufacturers and other job creators to our community and individuals thinking about moving here. We need stuff for them to do. So we need to begin to think about how do we create other opportunities for people to enjoy themselves in the community. And I think this is holding that back in a lot of ways. It's also holding back the growth and development of some of our existing businesses downtown. We listed the breweries uptown in Pitt Street. They're both having a hard time as markets have changed and tastes have changed. People are leaning more towards a mixed beverage right now in terms of their consumption. So they're having a hard time keeping up, keeping their customers in the door. A lot of people would rather go somewhere else where there's more of a wider variety of options. So it's really holding back both of those breweries, which are both really fantastic, clean, well-run businesses who, who I believe deserve the opportunity to expand the menu. There's also Aji, which is another kind of business. It's a beer and wine store and it also has some retail in it as well. So it's a, it's a unique business. But in a similar way, she just wants to be able to expand her offerings to be able to, to serve a wider audience of people coming through. A lot of times somebody wants a licorice, somebody wants a glass of wine, somebody wants a beer. So it would be nice to be able to offer, offer more. And liquor sales are, can be more profitable. And so you're, you're holding back a money generator for some of these businesses. It's a difficult time to, to run a business. It's been getting harder and harder with inflation and the cost of wages have all continued to rise. So I just think we need to be creative and thoughtful about ways to help these new businesses and ways to encourage quality new businesses to come to the area for people to employ. Again, I want to be careful because I don't want it to turn back into what it was. And I believe the 500-foot rule has done its job and has really thinned out the bars as intended to do. There's 14, I believe, versus 21 or whatever it was. But at the same time, the area has, has really grown up a lot with the new improvements. It's even more striking now than it was before. There are a lot more quality businesses like you were mentioning. So I think the time has come for us to, to move into a new phase downtown and to try to encourage some positive quality nightlife for hotel guests, for people coming, you know, from out of town, coming, thinking about moving to the area. We want to encourage other hotels to, to come to the area and set up shops. So, so that's, that's why I recommended that we have this session.
So why can't Aji breweries, why can't they operate under bar 2022?
I forgot to mention that point. 2,000 square feet is too small. Right now, the 2,000 square feet is the total square footage of the building. If we are going to go with, stick with amending the 2,000, the bar 2022, I believe they should reduce the square footage or have the square footage. I'm sorry, increase the square footage or, sorry, thank you. Or make it their, or we can measure their service area. I think it would be a more sensible thing to measure versus the, the square footage of the entire building.
So is that for the entire building, not including parts where the business isn't even operating?
Correct.
The footprint of the building.
The footprint of the entire building?
Right.
So if you have 2,000 square foot footprint, by the time you put the mandated bathrooms in it, a small kitchen area to do the washing and whatnot, and a cooler area, you've, you've got maybe.
Four thousand feet left.
But that's still the same business. It's still one, it's not like the, the guy with the cookie shop next door, I'm including his shop in the square feet. It is the same business.
For example, the scholar is a pretty small place and it's 2,600 square feet, just to give you a frame of reference.
So this might be a good time to say this, and I don't know that I'll go and say it. If you look at some of the options that council has to consider if you want to do anything, I would say you can break it down into, first of all, the 500-foot rule. Do you want to eliminate the 500-foot rule? The decision would be, do you want to do it, eliminate the downtown or city block? Those would be two decision points. If, if that's not an area you would like to explore, then we'd go back to the bar 2022, looking at what those requirements are. Do you want to have staff come back with some recommendations of how we could tweak it? Given the fact that we've had it in place for two years or three years and we have one? Is there, is it too tight to come back with some, some, some different changes to standards? And then do we want to look at that just in the downtown area? Or do we want to look at expanding that bar 2022 across the city? That's really kind of the decision points summarized, would you say?
Yes. So if, if it's eliminated throughout the city, then it's allowed, bars would be allowed near homes and churches?
Well, you'd still have the restrictions as to the, to the single-family homes and. Take one of them.
I think it's more useful to know that the scholar is 20,000, 2,600 square feet because you're right, it is a very modest-sized restaurant. I, to me, I would say, let's, I would be willing to look at that size restriction because I agree, that is very small. And I would also, again, just me, be willing to look at, if we wanted to take bar 2022 citywide, because I appreciate what you said about wanting to create additional entertainment districts. So those are a couple of things I, I would be willing to look at.
I know we all have plenty. Okay, so.
Well, I mean, I'm talking here. I'm the wife for teen, teen women. He is what else do you have?
She no beard.
So you probably remember some of what I think. So as, as a little boy, downtown was like, that many, yeah, over half of it.
Horse and bone.
Flanagan, Buddy Keling was down there. And so it was a vibrant hub. We had all the businesses. We had Steinbeck, Jackson Shoes, Harmony House South, Roses. All these places that were downtown and they were the hub of business for everybody to get. But with them was also the bars. You had the live, the biggest live music venue on the East Coast, the act, National Acts coming down. And you had the Say family, both Big Bob and George, that started the bars downtown and actually brought the first pizza joint into Greenville in Pitt County. And they all lived in harmony with each other and there was no problems in the bar. And at nighttime, you went down to town, you shopped at Kaufman's. I think Kaufman's was probably the last place that went downtown. And so in the seventies, it was, oh, let's be at the mall, the open-air mall. So you started seeing businesses leave downtown and go to the open-air mall, which is the Carolina East Mall anyway. And then they closed it in because they thought that was the great thing to do. And like everything, you had the mass exodus, not because of bars, but because they saw that as the way, the new way to do business, go out to one location and shop. And so now we see what that mall's about now. And so that's really what is what caused the exodus of the businesses downtown, what bars. And then you had what I call the perfect storm in, in 99. You had the flooding of the road. And so at that time, we were not enforcing the underage drinking law. I knew that as a criminal lawyer because, you know, the law was you had to be 21, but kids were still going out of town drinking. You went out of, out of, out of hand. But if we were frank about it, we know there was one bar that owned the, the largest bar downtown that didn't care. They didn't care about the city agreement. They didn't care. He cared about one thing, making dollars. And so his bar catered towards a group that came down and brought violence with them. And we can, I talk about that, but that's what caused the problem and that's what contributed to the shooting. Because up to that point, you didn't have a problem. So then we need to do something about it. So we pass the 500-foot rule. And so at that time, you had the underage drinking that was going on with Witten, which you had the bar and they didn't care about anybody. And he, his bars were notorious for trapping a lot of gang members. And so then you had that, that, that shooting. So the reaction was, oh, let's eliminate all the bars. Well, 20, Michael, I think 26 bars were grandfathered in. They were all college bars. Well, when we passed that 2022, the number of bars is going to lay down. So if it was a good thing and probable, why did those bars go down? Because now the laws are enforced. So if you got a college bar, you know, three, four seat crowd can't drink, right? And it going downtown at midnight now, still at nine o'clock, like when I was going downtown. You know, everybody went down at nine, at two o'clock. You went home. Now they go 12 o'clock and they go to Old Niners. And so there was a big, big, including our previous mayor, oh, the, the sky's going to fall. You're going to pass this wall now and all the bars will come back. It's going to be bad. Some developers downtown said the same thing. Has it happened? Absolutely not. Because the problem is gone. So what you have now, you can shake your head about it all along, but this, the facts prove that it's gone. That problem downtown is gone, but it's not used to be on that level. So now you have bars and here's, here's the question. We're trying to get young kids who graduate to stay here. And the problem we have, like my associate, what do I do after five o'clock? Where do I go after five o'clock? Do I all go hang out with a bunch of college kids who, you know, dollar and a half beers? No, you don't want to hang out with those people. You want to go make, you want to have a couple of drinks, have a nice conversation and do it quietly. So there's been a big impetus, which is what we started with 2022. Let's try this. Okay. And it was a lot of resistance to it, if you remember. There was a lot of resistance that the sky was going to fall in. Well, we had time now that demonstrates the sky hasn't been falling in. And so now we're getting ready to do the bulkhead. I think there's vision down to redo the amphitheater and make it a focal point of the river. The county's getting ready to move some of their county property across the rivers, which is going to free up all this stuff downtown to maybe do development. So we can court people, like when they get out of college, come down and have a vibrant place to come down, have a couple of drinks, go into a nice environment, not with college kids. And everybody survived with that. And this 2,000 footprint, it's, I thought it sounded good, but now I realize it's too small. Because once you take a 2,000 square foot footprint and you take out the square footage for, for bathrooms and a wash area, and then you've got the, the footage calculation, the amount of people you can have in it, it basically means you can't really have anything.
Advanced floor versus, advanced floor versus seating.
So, you know, the rule at the time, I think the perception was good. But really, if you look at it now, it's outdated. I mean, I don't know, I'm kind of on the fence about do we eliminate it completely? Because I've also seen people that go have, you know, trying to have special events and they do things because it can attract around people that cause violence. And you don't want violence downtown. Nobody wants to see that. But the 2,000 square foot is too, too small. It's like Matt's saying. There are people who want to come downtown and develop and care towards the older crowd. Yes, probably my wife and I like to go out, but we go to the same place for the same place to go. It's Nino. I love Nino, but I mean, after a while, even our little Michael, he gets old when he knows every week.
Hey, don't put that on the map.
Well, I know, and he knows I love him to death because I've seen him about three times a week now. Michael knows that. And so I think it's time to revisit it and, and even, I mean, I think at a minimum, look at the, the footprint. They could go that way because then we still can put conditions on it, if not looking at the whole fiber. Because I don't want to be like, we're just doing it downtown because I've talked to people outside the city limits. I mean, excuse me, outside downtown area, but also won't develop on the west side of the road. And I know I've said this many times, we can't be a great city unless we develop all areas of the city. So the north side, the west side, the south side, east side. I mean, if we do it just for the downtown area, I feel like the people outside that area are being discriminated against because why can't we develop our, our floors and whatnot if you're doing it downtown? Why can't we do it outside of the downtown area? So I want to make sure we treat everybody the same. But I think the reasons for that fiber rule, they're gone. You know, it's really, there was one club deal that everybody looked at. He talked to the police chief back then. And I was seeing the elements come out of that because we got business out of it. It was directly related primarily to one mall. The mall got, got gone.
I will say that there is a lot more open communication between law enforcement and the establishments. Every single month, everyone meets the ABC, the ALE, the GPD, all the, all the bar owners, all the restaurant owners are free to, to come to that meeting.
Usually good.
To, to be able to make sure that we are, we're speaking transparently in open forums about, about what, what the expectation is. And I do believe that has, that has helped.
ABC and ALE actually enforce the laws on both.
They, they do.
I would, I would disagree. There's a lot of common ground here. I would disagree with the, you know, there's no, their problems are all gone. I think that's, that is a narrative, that's your narrative, and I appreciate that. That's, that's not a narrative that I espouse. But I do believe there's plenty of common ground here to look at this footprint and look at, I agree, what we do downtown, we should, in all fairness, look at the entire city. And is it fair to say throughout the entire city, we got this 500-foot separation bar to bar? When we're not doing that downtown? After, you know, the, the three years or two years we've had to try this thing out and it seems in, in full to be a good approach, look at perhaps expanding that throughout the city and look at the footprint. To me, that's, you know, some, some good common ground here.
I think also if we open up the downtown area, the town commons, which I think is, the bulkhead is going to start in the amphitheater. And then, yeah, I think that's going to be, you know, one of the things we'll talk about a lot tonight before we hit our resume. Development and sales taxes.
As Matt calculated, only $118 last year we got from profit taxes and sales taxes and the occupancy tax. But we need to, we need to kind of figure out how do we cater to the people who are graduating and want them to come back? Let's give them amenities, it's not just a mall, there's other ones you can look at, so you know, arts and everything and everything else. But tonight, this is an issue when you look at, and it sounds kind of like Matt, but look at it pretty hard and definitely make some changes to it so that these people who want those types of restaurants or bars, we can cater to them and have people that can go to different places. And have them maybe develop not just downtown, but all over Greenville.
I think that, and I appreciate you mentioning that I'm from here. I was away for a little while, but I was still homeless, plus, plus the mortgage. I've never hung out downtown, and so that is not part of my journey. But I have been downtown at night, and I don't know if y'all have in the last couple of years. But it's quite a little zip. I feel sorry for our police department when I, when I have had to come down here downtown at night. Now, the few times that I have had to come down here at night, it was because, as you guys know, I'm a dancer. We had dancing events, and after a certain time, we were going to go get anything to eat. And so we came down to Black and Crack in the downtown. I was exposed to the environment. So I, I say that to say that there were no other options because you couldn't come anywhere but downtown to find something open. That's number one. But I do think that there needs to be some balance because I don't drink, I've never drank, never smoked. I dance hole in ground, I never drank, never smoked. So, you know, I find it interesting that we think that entertainment has to include that. So one of the things that I've always wondered, and when I was growing up, going back to, I'm a few years your junior, but, you know, White Store and other places that were around here, there was a very nice balance. Animals come during the day, and I don't know what happened at nights, but when we came during the day, there were places to shop and things to do when we don't have that anymore. So I wonder if we restricted too much, would it eliminate the ability to have that balance where, you know, there's some arts, there's some cultural things? I think it needs to diversify. Y'all know I don't code switch downtown, it's pretty wide. And you don't see many other cultures come this downtown, downtown, spend time downtown. And I am, other than that, probably the only other person at this table or in the room that owned the business down here. And so for 11 years, I had a dance studio right at the corner of Sixth and, and Sixth Street. And, and I will say that we lived there pretty much under the radar for that 11 years and functioned very well until the bar started standing. So I have a, again, I think a balanced perspective on the fact that I do think that we need to look at what the standards are. But I, I'm concerned about having too many bars around the city at large, as well as downtown, and, and us really thinking outside of the box about, you know, what type of extracurricular life, I won't even say nightlife, but extracurricular life we want to offer in our cities. Not just, not in our city, not just for students, not just for the ones that are graduating, but for folks in our age range that like to go out and have a good time. Now, mind you, most of the people that I know drink, and there's perfect defines, I'm not, I have no problem with being in the space. But definitely think that we need to, as Shontay said, I think she said, um, we want to let the bird out of the cage. I think we need to, you know, be real considerate of that. And I do think 2,000 square feet is, I don't even think small, I think that is just a hole in the wall. So I do think that that needs to be expanded, and that's from experience, a lot of math. And then we say treat everyone the same. I like to see that happen. I'm just gonna leave that right there on the table because I, I don't think that things are enforced equally and with equity across the board as it relates to who owns the board. And I would like to ask, who does the ABC and the ALE, who do they report to? Is it just their board?
There's a Pitt County ABC board.
Just their board? But after the board, that's, that's pretty much it. And I'm sure that it's like with the other entities, we appoint the boards. Or the county, the county appoints.
What'd you see, Mike, lately?
That's a good question for Shontay. Shontay, you stated that the ABC board determine who gets the permit for the behaviors or something? I said that incorrectly. What does that look like?
What they have from the record or? I don't know exactly what the parameters are, but essentially, they can look at the character, the reputation of a person and decide if they get a permit based on that, even though we may check all the other boxes, zoning, location, and use wise.
It's extensive, when you get your fingerprint, take it out.
Yeah, but from what I've heard too, it can also be pretty discretionary.
I believe there is, I think there's a good term to use, discretionary, because we can, we can, we can fill out, or I have to give the opinion. And I'm gonna give the opinion based off of staff assessment, but that doesn't mean the permit's not gonna be issued.
Okay, and there's no appeal process for that? It's a, it's a appeal process.
And once it grabs a permit, there's a force of authority over them. Depending on the violations that they like, somebody underage, they call that. If it's typically fines, and the fines get deeper and deeper, and if it's something more serious, they can take your permit altogether. They do, they do track it. Somebody has left your bar and they too much against the record, they, they come after the bar and they ramp off, which is hard to prove, but now we're tracking apps and a lot of that. Three sixty, like apps a lot of kids have, they can track back to it through credit cards. Most kids now use credit cards and debit cards, you know, banking money, they like their cash. So they are getting more, I'm just trying to, they are getting more in tune with that. And so I'm seeing where they want to force that, just what they should. And could be, and you get caught. And of course, your local, law enforcement has a lot to do with that, but I will say this, while there's a problem for them, drug sales and bars and fucking everything.
So to go back to my options, let me see if this is, if I've got a testament of, I think where council might want to go with that. I don't hear there's a strong tolerance for removing the five hundred foot rule either in the downtown or citywide. So that would lead, go and having staff go back and evaluate the bar 2022, look at what kind of recommended, recommended changes we could bring back to you to tweak it, loosen how, how you want to say that. And then also look at, at what that would look like if we expanded it across the city. Is that, is that a thumbs up that I can get from everybody? We will evaluate that and we will bring it back to you. Good? Okay.
Is there any way Shontay could do that presentation one more time?
That's like the hundredth version of that presentation.
All right, every time it keeps getting better, Shontay, good job.
All right, Mayor, item number two, presentation providing analysis of the GUC City of Greenville relationship. I will call forward Assistant City Attorney Scott Dixon for the presentation.
And you guys bear with me because I also did not bring glasses.
Things plus today, do you need any?
I'll figure it out immediately. As directed by council, though, we prepared this brief presentation really outlining the roles, responsibilities, and our relationship between the city and GUC. You can see this chart that really lays out what would be essentially the crux of the discussion. And I must point out that Mr. City Manager, I watched him formulate this graph about as fast as I've ever seen anybody do it. It was trying to see. Also, for your own edification and reference, there is, there should be a copy of the charter in front of you. You'll notice that's the last revised version from 1991. It is the Controlling Authority and it's about five pages, so it's not significant. This one will be a very long presentation. First and foremost, going through the historical development. So the original charter for Greenville Utilities Commission was adopted by the North Carolina General Assembly in 1905. This charter's been amended five times over the last 120 years, with the last amendment being in 1991. You'll see in that 1905 charter, they established GUC as really good water and light commission. There was three initial board members for the proper management of water, sewer, and electric light systems of the town of Greenville. It was revised in 1941. The title was formally changed to Greenville Utilities Commission. That membership was increased from three to five, and the scope was expanded to include public utilities. 1953, the city manager was added as a full member, increasing membership from five to six. 1969, maximum compensation for the commission members had been set, and a city, a city council liaison was established. 1979, another minor change, membership was increased from six to seven. And then this finally brings us to our 1991 revision where multiple substantive changes were made. So first and foremost, you will see outlined are the authorities and responsibilities of the GUC Board of Commissioners. Section, section one states that the Greenville Utilities Commission was established for the proper management of the public utilities of the city of Greenville, both within and outside the corporate limits of the city. You'll see in section two, the Greenville Utilities Commission Board of Commissioners is to consist of eight members. Six members, including the city manager, must be city residents. Two members that are residents of the county will reside outside the city, and all members must be GUC customers. The GUC is set to meet once a month at a designated time and place, and minutes must be kept for all GUC members, I mean, not meetings. Now, this is the most pertinent section as it pertains to autonomy of GUC and really the role between kind of the two parties. You will see outlined in section five, Greenville Utilities Commission shall have entire supervision and control of the management, operation, maintenance, improvement, and the extension of the public utilities of the city, which public utility shall include electric, natural gas, water, and sewer services, and shall fix uniform rates for all services rendered. You'll see that pretty much gives them complete control over their operations. And while this isn't a very unique setup throughout the country, it is in North Carolina. So I commend the council for kind of making this request because as a Pitt County product, I mean, most of the people I grew up have no idea kind of the relationship between the parties. But I think really the way we're set up is essentially it's us and state throughout the state. So it's rather unique, but you'll see in section 10, they also have full authority at all times to discharge, remove any officer, agent, independent contractor, or employee of the Greenville Utilities Commission. And then finally, it's section six, the GUC Board of Commissioners shall hire a competent and qualified general manager. The duties of that general manager are to supervise and manage the public utilities subject to approval of the Board of Commissioners, cause said utilities to be properly and orderly conducted, provide for the operation, maintenance, and improvement of utilities, provide for the extension of utilities except for sewer extensions outside of the city's ETJ, furnish proper connections and services upon proper application for the same, and attend to all complaints as to defective service and provide remedy for the same. GUC is to provide the city with a monthly financial report of its receipts and disbursements. That is outlined in section seven. There's also the annual turnover which they provide, which is based on a formula provided by the charter. That formula is 6% of the electric and natural gas systems fixed assets minus the debt on those assets, plus 50% of the retail cost of public lighting. Finally, GUC must prepare and submit a budget for the coming year to the city council. The budget should include estimated revenue, expenses, capital expenditures, debt service, and turnover to the city. That's in section eight. It is worth noting, the authority of the city council in this matter is an upper down vote. So essentially, the city council doesn't have the ability to change the budget that's kind of proposed. What happens is a, a, the budget is presented to the GUC Board of Commissioners as adopted and submitted for approval to you guys. If you guys deny it, it would go back then for them to kind of resubmit it to them. Does that make sense? Then that brings us to the authorities and responsibilities of the city council. Now, again, as it comes to the city's kind of discretion to kind of effectuate its will to GUC, this is the most pertinent section, section three, and that comes down to the appointments. So the city council appoints all GUC members except for the city manager, who is hired by the city council. And the charter declares the city council appoint GUC members with utilities experience. Utilities experience is really the only like mandate from the qualification, but it is contemplated by the legislator that the city council appoint GUC members with uti, uh, excuse me, financial engineering, environmental, technical, or developmental backgrounds. So again, whenever you guys are making those appointments, just understand it was contemplated by the assembly that they have those kind of requirements, so just kind of keep that in mind. And then the two GUC board members who reside outside the city shall be nominated by the Board of Commissioners. But again, as far as the, the say into the daily operation, the maintenance and control and decisions they kind of make, this is really where you guys can kind of exercise that ability by appointing people you think are qualified and make those great decisions. You guys also hear appeals from rate decisions on the rates on GUC. So I believe since the charter of 91, there's been one instance of a rate appeal where you, the city council denied that appeal request, but you guys by charter hear those rate appeals. And again, just for edification, you don't get to change the rate or set what the rate would be. It would be an up or down vote on whether or not you uphold their decision or you reverse it. Changing the rates is a different decision. If GUC wishes to undertake any additional public enterprise service, which may be lawfully operated by a municipality, it must obtain approval by the city council. That's outlined in section five. City council must also approve sewer extensions outside the city's ETJ. That is in section six. And then finally, you guys must approve the budget. Again, it's kind of an up or down vote, but that is y'all's authority. And then that takes us to joint responsibilities. As far as the joint responsibilities, the city council and GUC must conduct a joint meeting at least once a year to discuss issues of mutual interest. That's outlined in section four. This is generally done, pay structure, pay policies, personnel, things like that. But again, this is also an avenue for the council where if you feel like there's something that we might be able to collaborate, we've worked to something, or you guys want to have a meeting about that, the city manager, their manager, you could give that in a, a gen item, and you guys could potentially have one of these joint meetings about those issues. Now, it gets a little hairy in that stuff that's of interest to the city might not necessarily be of interest to GUC. Likewise, something that's of interest to GUC might not be necessarily of interest to us. So that would be really the responsibility of kind of the managers to work that out and get that in front of you guys. But again, take something like transparency, for instance. That'll be something where if they wanted to have that kind of discussion, that could be something where we're both mutually aligned and interested in trying to do that for the public, that could be brought up and maybe added. But again, we don't get to necessarily direct it, it's more of a request and kind of a cooperative collaborative partnership, for lack of a better word.
So we could request that.
Right.
They could either accept that request or not.
We think this is of joint interest, we would like this to be added. And again, I, I would think best practice, it's not formally stated in the charter, but you would think that would essentially be done to the managers, kind of the person in charge for each entity, to work that out, see if the interests align with, obviously, direction from their board, the city council. Section seven outlines that it is the intention of the charter that a joint financial audit of the city and GUC be prepared by the single auditing firm that is done. And then section nine, it is the intention of the charter that the G, city and GUC maintain mutual pay claims, personnel policies, and benefits for the respective employees. I believe that is also the same. And that is pretty much it. So you see, this is really just a five page kind of document. We tried to kind of cover the most pertinent sections, but happy to answer any questions if you had any.
There's been one appeal to the, to rate increases.
That's my understanding. There's been one instance of the city council just haven't decided a rate appeal since this charter in 1991, and they denied that appeal, so they didn't like, they didn't send it back, they signed with GUC essentially, is my understanding.
Because I wonder if the public is aware, because I think, you know, rate increases happen pretty frequently. And I wonder if the public's aware that, for instance, tonight, they can come speak or that they can, outside of the budget discussion, they can actually appeal those rate increases.
Well, again, I, I think this is why it's so positive that this request was kind of made in many respects because while you can access this charter online, while again, I think some people can make an effort to try to go to some GUC meetings and stuff like that, public's not always necessarily aware of the dynamics of the relationship, you know, kind of the process of it. And I think having access to this information and having access to those procedures is a huge, significant thing just for the interest and edification of residents and constituents.
It's been 10 years since utilities have increased. The rates, it's 10 years I'm saying.
Well, that's because that rate stabilization program, but as we found out, that's, you know, we're looking at rate increases ahead.
But could not increase the tax, the utilities rates for our citizens in 10 years? You said they occur frequently. It's been 10 years.
They do occur frequently, as we found out there at last, at the conversations GUC's budget, the rate stabilization program, which is a good idea, which did what it was supposed to, but from what we saw, I think you're gonna be seeing.
My comments would be that, as some of you may remember, our, I think it was in April, I think it was in April, we had a joint meeting with Greenville Utilities. And at that time, we had some public input that referenced the transparency that you talked about, Mr. Dixon, and accountability. And because there was no point in the meeting where we circled back to those comments and still being deprimed of that, I was sitting there thinking, okay, well, we're all here together, so why not go ahead and talk about what we can do about it? My suggestion was to ask GUC to come up with a strategic plan to address accountability and transparency. And I. And I appreciate what you said, Scott, about discussing it in a collaborative way, because I felt like in that meeting, it was met with a lot of opposition. And I understand the structure of the meeting wherein it was not on the agenda, and so therefore, there was some discussion about addressing something that's not on the agenda that had already been approved. But instead of it being met with a collaborative tone, I felt like it was met with opposition that, well, while we hear what you're saying, we have something in place, and we feel like what we have in place should meet the need of what the public was requesting. And then there was a comment made that we did not have the authority to ask them to come up with a strategic plan, or ask them to try to accommodate what was being asked of the public, to which I felt disturbed by, because when you think about the collaborative nature and how it perhaps could have been handled, I felt like the tone was unfortunate and disrespectful. My goal was truly to understand, okay, what does the charter say? What are our responsibilities? And perhaps I jumped the gun by saying, okay, can you present a strategic plan? But just to have the floor open to having the discussion and conversation about what was being asked for by our constituents, I was disheartened by the response that was received. So I appreciate the presentation. I understand now where we stand. I am a bit discouraged that, because I do sit on the board where we're discussing pay raises, and we're discussing employee benefits, and what is mutually beneficial for the city and GUC, yet that seems to be where the line is drawn as far as how I can try to best advocate for what citizens are asking for. But I feel like I clearly understand now, and my hope would be that they would have a, that GUC would have an open ear to what citizens are asking for and requesting.
Well, Madam Councilwoman, I don't think anybody can not admire your intention behind that. I think everybody understands what you were trying to do and advocate for the residents. And I think it is kind of an odd setup. I mean, honestly, I told you, I'm from Greenville. I have people that have been raised with, upbringing with my entire life that had no idea of the dynamic of this relationship. And I think in most places, you would think of it kind of as like a city department, because that's kind of how it is. So in that instance, for you to say, hey, we want a report on transparency, prepare something else, that would be entirely appropriate, would make a ton of sense, there'd be nothing wrong with that. And there's not even inherently anything wrong with kind of how you did it. It's just, we have this state statute that really dictates kind of delineating lines, I guess, between the two organizations. But I think that you nailed it on the head, and that it's really all about communication and how we're kind of effectuating this kind of partnership, because ultimately, it is a collaborative partnership. And depending on the lens of how you view that, I mean, you look at the awards that GUC has and the type of service that they provide our residents, I think generally speaking, out of the park, I think they do a tremendous job. You look at how city works with them, I think, again, a tremendous job of collaboration and working with each other. But there is kind of this dynamic that, you know, you have to be aware of, I guess, and kind of how we navigate it. And so all I can advise to the council is, one, I think this was a tremendous idea just having this presentation brought. But two, when there are these kind of areas, because we can't force them to be interested in something that I guess we find more important than they do, just like they can't force us to be as interested in something that we might not care about necessarily. But I think whenever those kind of situations arise, dealing with the managers and making sure those lines are clear, and that, hey, we really want you to take this seriously. We want to have a meeting about this for the benefit of the public. My thinking is, most parties are going to be receptive to that kind of message. And, you know, you're hopeful not. And if you find that that's not coming to be, you guys effectuating that for your appointments. You appoint people who you know damn well they've seen the league. You know well they've met that kind of a seat. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Scott. And GUC is not subject to the North Carolina Utilities Commission regulations and guidelines?
I'm not going to, I'm not super familiar with the North Carolina Utilities Commission, because obviously, they're kind of on their own end, essentially, so I don't have to deal with the utilities on State Street. So I'm not sure where that line is for them, but we can absolutely get back to you about that.
Yeah, I mean, now would be an ideal little time to talk about that, because the North Carolina Utilities Commission actually provides additional safeguards for the public.
Well, again, I can't speak to the safeguards of GUC.
And as I was going to tell, Councilwoman Willis, it may not have turned out like you would have wanted it to, but his response to you in a sense was also letting people know where to find it. So you made that, you made people aware of where to locate things, had you not asked those questions. So I don't want you to get disheartened, because, you know, you feel like the public is not being, and I don't, but so your question and his response to it gave the public exactly what they needed to have what you wanted accomplished.
Can I interject really quick? I think her, I agree and disagree. I think her question and their response, and, you know, and Portia put that as tactfully as I think anyone could. I think the responses were both condescending and disrespectful, because it was almost like putting you in check.
Not the direct responses, but she, they explained where that could be found by the public.
But that still didn't satisfy the public. And so I want to, several of us got calls after that meeting. And I just want to highlight for all of us on council, as well as everyone in the room, that the tone in which she was responded to, and the only reason I didn't say anything that night is because Marianne started talking, you know, when their ball started rolling. And so I just stayed in, I'm not saying that, I'm being factual.
You're totally laying down.
No, I'm going to keep a real one. But I'm almost appreciative of that particular night, because I would have responded in a slightly protective manner, as opposed to just general, because it was condescending and disrespectful. And so, you know, that definitely needs to be highlighted. And even in the responses today, in the presentation, it's like, you know, this is what you ought to be. And the bottom line is that both all of us, as well as GUC, we all work for the people. And so whatever box you want to put transparency and openness and engagement in, might not be the box that they feel it should be in. And I'll give you an example. The meetings were in the middle of the day on a weekday. To me, that doesn't say that you want people to attend your meetings and participate and give feedback, because the average person cannot attend the meetings and give feedback at that time. I've even said, since I've been on council, and thank God that our staff has paid attention, that you're not serious about community engagement if you're offering anything before six o'clock. Because folk got work, and they got things to do, they got kids. And so just the dynamics of how things are structured says, this is who we are, we're in charge, just like they said that night, and get out of our space. And so there has to be some level of communication between council and GUC, and there has to be some level of reevaluation, some way, somehow, so that citizens feel that their concerns are being listened to. Because also, in their bylaws, which I took time to look at after that night, and, you know, on their website says you're owned by citizens, right? And so listen to your bosses. And I do think that they have done a good job, but regardless of what I think, or Scott thinks, or, you know, anyone else, when you say, I think they've done this, and I think they do a great job, it doesn't matter. Who cares what each citizen thinks? And I think that oftentimes, when we're in these spaces, we all forget that we're not in these spaces to be the foremost authority on anything. All of us are in these spaces to be representatives of the people that have either elected us or elected us to appoint appropriate people to be in those spaces, all of which report back to the citizens. And we seem to forget that. And I think that the responses and the tone.
I think we forget that. I disagree with that.
Well, actions speak louder than words, and I don't want to go there on GUC.
Please don't.
But we don't do that. And if we did, then the citizens will not be sitting up. And it's not, again, my opinion, your opinion, Scott's opinion, or anyone else's opinion that matters. It is theirs that matters. And when we are in these spaces, we're not in these spaces to represent ourselves, we're in these spaces to represent the people that voted us in. And I'll leave it on the table at that.
I mean, I'll say, in total respect to you, I got phone calls the next day, too, that were on the other side, saying that what took place, when something wasn't on the agenda or was requested to be on the agenda, was discussed, and they felt that that was disrespectful for everybody that was at that board meeting. So you can look at the both perspectives, and also, I think you do have to keep in mind, too, just because those people showed up, doesn't mean that that's the majority of everybody in our community that's speaking. Their voices matter just as much as everybody else in our community, but you've got to understand that everybody doesn't think that way, right? And so, I mean.
I just think that we need to remember that regardless of who we are, whether we're black or white, Republican, Democrat, I don't care about any of that, right? So whenever I'm speaking to UPTA, or if I'm speaking to less, if I'm speaking to Monmouth, I'm not speaking to, I'm not speaking to color, I'm not speaking to political affiliation, I'm speaking to a sense of humanity, a sense of decency and respect, and I'm speaking to your heart, right? And so regardless of, there were people in that room that night, but there was also consensus outside that room. And whenever we are representing, we're representing more than the people who think like us, and we're representing more than the people that look like us, we're representing the entire community. And I think that in that space, that was part of what was challenging in that, in that moment. And again, it wasn't necessarily what was done or said, as much as it was how it was done.
And as far as the agenda, this is what I said that night, and I'd like to just remind this council that Councilmember Robinson, during his comments, said, I want to talk about a sports complex, I want Greenville to have a sports complex. In his comments, was not on the agenda. I had never heard about it until his comments, and we voted on it in the comments section of the city council meeting. I bring that up because we did it with Councilmember Robinson, but then when Councilmember Willis wants to do something like that, it is completely shut down. And to Tanya's point, to Councilwoman Forman's point, it was done in what I also felt was a disrespectful and disminishing act.
I wasn't, I wasn't there, so I don't know what happened, but.
But I appreciate the.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not here to argue with you, but I just, I see both sides on it. I really did, I got phone calls, I mean, I listened to what you had to say, and I'm sure you spoke to many constituents, I feel that way, but I did speak with other ones that felt the other way, too. And I think it's important to listen to everybody. Help her out.
So it all leads on to the Utilities Commission. And so those two folks that came up and spoke, and I believe everybody who's come and spoken has something to say, whether I agree with them or not, or whether it's faceless or not, but when people come up and make certain allegations, and I sit on a committee, I'm going to do the homework. I know one thing from me and lawyer on this three night, you can't make anybody look at something they don't want to see, and you can't make them hear it if they don't want to listen to it. So I'm going to do a little bit of that. So, you know, what did people do before we had websites and internet? Most people in here, what, it was internet? I looked long enough, it was not. So the first thing I'll do is talk about this, because there was allegation of no transparency, or needing more transparency, and we need some teeth in. Well, first, the website's easily accessible through our own city website. You can link it. Number two, you can go straight to the website. When you go to the website, it identifies me, it identifies your own manager, commission members, and each of their terms. Well, how do we get ahold of them? It's got your bio, it's got for each member and their contact email. It's got all the agendas past and present, including the agenda materials passed, and minutes for available on. Any customer wishes to address commission, any company, you can use a request form online. Or they don't like their current, they can contact the executive secretary, and she'll give them only and put them on there. Next, Tony Cannon. If you don't know, has an open door policy. You go out there and want to talk to him, and he's there, come talk to him. So he's got an open door policy. The identity information contact for commissioners on the website, the management team that runs utilities is on the website, for each one of them, their contact information, the financial information, all the monthly reports, as well as yearly reports are on the website. If you've got an area map that identifies where all the utilities are, and it's got a list of all the awards and accomplishments, it's got the bids that they put on, you can even get tour facilities if you want that. You can call and get that. All the publications past and present on the website, their community outreach, there are a lot of good things they do in the community that are public outreach, that's all on the website. The list of all the meetings and times, their clean future goals, the storage shift, they got news from the platform that got over fourteen awards, they identify all the awards, nineteen years under the Awards of Excellence. So you've got to imagine under all that, when Tony Cannon hears that he's not being transparent, we need more teeth, he was insulted. I don't know, he didn't set me, but I felt that he was clearly insulted. So before the joint meeting, I've been on the liaison since 2023, nobody has come to me, not even my council members, nor anybody else, not those two speakers, they didn't contact me. I haven't even given out my own cell phone on the city council, and I think I'm probably the only one that's done it. I've done it two or three times. You want to talk to me, here's my cell phone number, call me. Nobody has called, nobody on this council came to me. Well, there's not one complaint to the city manager. He sits on that commission. No one complained to him. I checked with all the board members, nobody on the board has been complaining to, the chair, the general manager, anybody. Now, and if I'm wrong, please point it out, since I've been on that utility commission, not one council member has come and sat there. I don't, you don't have to, but if you got a problem, I expect, let's go take a look at it, because I like to see things, and I'm going to invite you to see a problem, and find out what they are. And so the two people who spoke, I have never seen them come with the Utilities Commission. Now, I get it, it's during the day, but, you know, you can file a complaint, there's a way to file a complaint locally, and also, utilities at the state level has a way to file a complaint. I checked, there's no complaints. The gentleman who spoke, I want to check specifically him, because he was making some serious allegations. What I did learn is, he did come with a large group one time unenacted. And so if you follow the procedures, you got to put in a request, you can do it with a telephone, you can do it online. So he was told, glad to have you back next time, come back and speak. He never showed back up again. And so there is a complaint mechanism. You got a problem with something, there's a complaint mechanism built in, that you can complain locally, or you can complain at the state level. No complaint has been filed whatsoever. So they're subject to the same public laws we are. We can go into closed session, for certain reasons, and only certain reasons. And to my knowledge, there's never been any complaint lodged against him at all for violating the public means law. So when people come in, they have a right to come in and lodge complaint. But, you know, when they come in and they make, what I think, if you look at the website, and I've been a party to it, and say that somehow we need more transparency, that doesn't sit very well to me, because what they're saying is, I'm complicit in that, he's complicit as a general manager is in it, every commission member is complicit in it, the chair's complicit in it, and Tony Cannon and all the staff are complicit in it. And so, you know, again, I'm going to say, I can't force people to look at what they refuse to see, or what they want to hear, don't want to hear, but all the information I just went over with this council and people in this room, all you got to do is click the keyboard and look at it. Or if you're not here in that Saturday, pick up the phone, which is, and say, hey, can I come in, tell me at any time? Tony Cannon, another man in person, he will make himself available to answer any questions. So again, what we do, and so here's my point. You know, the transparency, where they were making lack of transparency, isn't a tackle on general manager, his staff, employees, commission members past and present, liaison, and our city manager sits on the Utilities. It's one of the best, if not the best, in the state. All the awards document that. And here's one, I'll conclude with that, because I'm a little talky, and y'all know that, but I also don't have a filter, y'all know that, too. If you don't know it, you're going to know it right now. Our citizens have a right to make complaints at public conferences, even on their basis. This right, I will continue to defend for anybody, for any reason, for any purpose, your right to communicate. But I will defend that right, because you should also know this, and don't make a mistake about it. When you come in and make basis allegations as a council member, I will not remain silent. I will one hundred percent defend those you wish to attack and malign without fact and for. and for improper purposes. People come up here all the time and say things that don't serve a purpose, or political things. And I believe that's what both them were. That's my opinion, it's not this council's opinion. But when you come in here and attack him and those councilmen, and I know this is my truth, I am not going to sit here and listen to it without giving you my response. Nobody in this room has to agree with me, but that's the way I feel about it. There is transparency, they come, and, you know, what's interesting, they make the complaints and go away. If you're really genuinely interested, go show up. I hadn't seen anybody, hadn't seen them since the beginning. I did know some members afterwards, tried to learn more about it, and I appreciate that. But, you know, I, you know, pick up the phone and call me. Again, my number's out there, I'll give it to anybody, come talk to me. But, this group runs a tight ship and is fully transparent. I don't know how to be any more transparent. I don't know anybody that identified how it's not transparent. They made some allegations, so if you're sitting on there, and thinking our city manager sits on there, you're really accusing him, too. I mean, it ain't really you are, because he sits on that commission. So when you attack our city manager, you attack our, our general manager, fullback, you attack the commission members, both past and present, and don't expect me to sit here and be quiet. Well, that's never going to happen. I appreciate everybody's patience with my comments, I'm not angry with anybody here, it's just the way I get proud about things, but, uh, when those things happen, I do my homework, and I went through it, and I have a lot more to say. I think you covered a lot of it, because I want to tell you a lot more about history, but, you look at the website, and go talk to Tony Cannon, go visit with him. And again, what you made, I get it, we're working sometimes, you can't go another day. But what's to stop you from picking up the phone and going, Mr. Cannon, can I come meet with you after five or six and talk to you about some concerns?
I'll answer that question for you. I appreciate everything you said, brother.
All right.
Um, first of all, uh, uh, none of this stuff is personal.
It's not, it's not personal.
Mary and I had a conversation about something else the other day, and I was like, how do you, how do you?
Well, this is, this is not personally about here. My, my beef is not with the thing about here.
But listen to me, and I'm not saying that, I'm saying in general, none of this stuff is personal. Again, we're here to represent people other than ourselves.
Right.
Um, and so, when you say, you know, attack, and attack you, attack Michael, attack the board, nobody attacking any of them.
Those people were, were attacking them with baseless allegations.
And that's a relative statement, number one.
It's not relative, it's factual.
I, but some of that I was a part of, and I know that they, that, 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 that information was factual, but that, that's not here nor there. The bottom line is, that stuff wasn't personal, they weren't attacking you, they weren't attacking Michael, they weren't attacking any of those people. And they weren't necessarily always complaining as much as they were expressing concern. So I think that, I think that some of that is a bit extreme.
I agree with your character.
What was communicated, um, what was communicated, and what I got from it, was not necessarily complaints as much as it was concerns, and there having been a loss of trust. And that was the general consensus of what was being communicated. Whether we agree with it or not, that loss of trust, and, and to build trust, it takes consistent communication, um, one has to be approachable, which might be why people haven't been approached, or people haven't been contacted, like, whether it be you, or Tony, or whomever, um, how easy is it for someone to come up and talk to you? Um, how easy is it for someone to call and talk to you? If they're going to get a response with a particular tone, is that welcoming or deterrent? We might want to ask ourselves that type of question, um.
When you accuse somebody of doing something behind, in the back doors, that gets people riled up.
But, and, well, that might get people riled up, but that also, again, reduces trust from the people that we're here to serve. And for me, it wasn't one side or the other, it was just that maintaining some level of, of, of trust and respectability for the people in our community. Um, I think that that is worth going the extra mile. Um, I will reiterate, um, I won't back down off that. Having meetings in the middle of the day for anyone says, uh, we are limiting the number of people that we end up talking to. Um, and, you know, most people are going to look at that as their window or door into having the opportunity to communicate. Um, you know, the average person's going to be respectful of the fact that, you know, you have a job to do, and you bring expertise to that job, um, and not necessarily want to interrupt your day and try to do it during that time. Um, so, you know, definitely, even when people have flowing, uh, floating meetings, I tell them, no, people still probably are not going to want to arrive to that place, you know? Um, but, I, I, and that's a separate thing. But digress to say, that having it in the middle of the day is a deterrent. And not, not having a major dog in the fight, it's just being open, just being open to some other type, uh, opinion and stance than where we sit. And that was what I was saying a second ago, is that it's not black, white, Republican, Democrat, it's just caring, caring about what someone thinks other than ourselves. Being willing to put ourselves in someone else's shoes, understanding that everything that we do, everything that we say, and everything, every action that we take impacts thousands of people. Um, I'm not saying that they don't, but I'm saying that those people need to feel that. It doesn't make a difference what we feel, it doesn't make a difference of what we say, it's how they feel that counts. And so, you know, just wanted to digress to say that.
I can't understand.
If I, if I could vent, if I could go to the, to the point about loss of trust, one of the things that was mentioned, I know Compute North is bankrupt, and I know we passed cryptocurrency, uh, guidelines now, and I'm very grateful that this council has been able to do that. But let's not forget, Compute North had equipment being stored on Mumford Road at GUC before the city council had even considered cryptocurrency ordinances, or really before the public knew anything about it. There was a tremendous loss of trust related to cryptocurrency mining and the potential for that business to locate here. And those, that was, as I remember that night, those were the specific instances that at least one of the speakers had referenced.
Do you know the circumstances of that?
I do, yeah, okay.
Anything else?
Here it's all here.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.